We're on live.
We are now.
Are we? Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr Chair.
Thanks. Thank you. Right, we've got apologies from Councillor Mackinson, Councillor Young, Councillor Wing, Councillor Dark and Councillor Driver. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any declarations of interest? Okay. We... Okay, let's move it. Can we have a look at the minutes of the last meeting? Does everyone agree that they are a record, faithful record of what was said?
Yes.
Who would like to propose that?
Chair. Austin.
Okay. Councillor Austin and Councillor Alban.
I've heard it.
Oh, yeah. Or Councillor Hudson. So, should we say Austin?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Right. So, the next item on the agenda is the Kent Highway Speed Limit Order on Spratling Street.
Aileen. Thank you, Chair. The effect of the order would be to reduce the current national speed limit to 40 miles per hour on the following road in Ramsgate. A spratling lane from the current 40 mile per hour speed limit at a point 16 metres from its junction with Sadler's Mews, for a distance of 90 metres in a north-western direction. So, they're extending it. Thank you.
Thank you. What do people think about this? Does it affect sense?
Yeah.
To me, it's an area that's becoming increasingly built up and I would support it.
Absolutely.
Agree.
Agree with Councillor Austin. So, I've proposed that we...
Anybody else got any...
Yeah, there's a body of us.
Anyone else got any... No. Okay. It's Councillor Alban, you wanted to...
Proposed, we note it, Chair. That's...
Seconded by Councillor Austin. Right, could we vote on that, please?
Aye, but...
Okay. Yep. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Ceilings Project, which I think we probably all received copies of this in the post, in addition to, we've got it up here on the screen.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering people's thoughts about this. Councillor Austin?
I've been to a couple of meetings about this and there are a lot of concerns in the community about it. My understanding is, we did have an earlier briefing for TDC members quite a while ago now. My understanding is that the leader plans a second briefing for us.
I think that will, that may well be the case. We know it's not been set yet, but...
Right. I have read somewhere that there is, that there should be another briefing. Just to find out, like, I'm just wanting to ask these members, will we be happy to need to propose to the leader inviting town and parish council members to that briefing if it was appropriate, so that we've all got that information? Because there's a lot of information to take in with this and there's a lot of sort of competing agendas going on, obviously. And I was going to suggest, Chair, as I mentioned to you earlier, that we do actually have another planning meeting in the diary before the closing date for this consultation and that maybe, although we may wish to have that this evening, though we've more information coming to us all in the meanwhile, and we might want to defer a final decision for how we react until, until that next plan.
This has got to be decided tonight.
We've got plenty of time and there's a, there's a lot of information to take in.
Read through.
Anybody see it? Councillor Alban?
Chair, thank you. Yeah, I think because of the importance of this issue and, and its effects, especially whilst, whilst the majority of this decision, if you like, is, is not within Ramsgate Town Council's realm, but where it, where the line, these electric, whatever you want to call it, can come in across Pegwell.
Yes.
I think that must give us concern, especially for wildlife.
Yes.
Which is, which is, you know, it's going to be quite, in my humble opinion, quite devastating, I think, to the seals and whatever there. I think, I would like, I think full council should discuss this and that we make a decision on behalf of the council and not just in the planning and infrastructure. I think we should formally do that and, and then I think that we can give our, Ramsgate Town Council can, can give its thoughts and to its document and, and give a proper, full response. Obviously, we need to work with the town clerk in relation to, to that. I think what's, what's disappointing is that they're not doing it through normal planning terms. It's, it's a DCO like Manchester Airport, you know, nothing, you know, they're entitled to, to do that, but effectively, the government will decide this, no matter what we say, but we have to have a big enough swell of residents and to be able to say to our residents, please respond to this. We can only do so much as a council, but let them, they've got to do their own bit. If they don't like it, they must say so and why they, why they don't like it. So, I've said too much now, so I'll just shut up, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Alban. Now, there's a lot of public expression about this that's not particularly favorable.
It causes quite a lot of disquiet, so do you want to say something else? Don't know. So, is there a, sorry, Councillor Austin?
This is obviously part of a wider scheme, where there is a project in Suffolk, a project in Belgium. And the information I've had and the meetings I've attended is that they're, as I were a bit further ahead from the law on this and that proposals are, there is a counter-proposal to back different sites, so offshore sites, et cetera, sites that are less damaging to wildlife and, and biodiversity and so on. And they, there is a steering group, a fledgling steering group here, which includes the landowners who are affected, whose land will be compulsorily purchased, who are linking up with those people, so that we can share information and constructive suggestions about alternatives if we want to.
Yeah. Sorry. I, I, I think, obviously, why they are, let's say, like, why Suffolk or whatever in front, is because that's where it's starting from. So, they will be in front.
They're ahead.
The consultation process. Good, that happens in Belgium, but separate nice waffles, of course. But, um, we're here.
Waffles. I love waffles. It says Friston in Suffolk. Have we got any feedback from the councils there? I mean, is there a district council there that's been consulted?
I don't know who the district council is, but yeah.
I just wonder if there's any coordination between...
I don't know if it's an aged person who's meeting this, who I think may be a council or...
If you don't mind, Chair, I'll just, I will Google that and see where it is and we just see, just while we're talking about it.
It's a Friston substation, it says. I'm getting a couple of dates of meetings.
Yes, okay.
It seems it would affect, sorry, it would affect quite a lot of councils, actually, because it's quite a large area.
Yes. The other thing, they're, they're arranging a series of meetings and so they've had a webinar this afternoon, one of the TDC councils. So, I'll be suggesting that we go before council.
Yeah.
I was just going to tell you a couple of dates.
Yeah.
I'm also suggesting that we can go in the town district, so to get more information on this.
Yes, I think so. It's near Alderburgh.
Which is on the coast.
Sorry, I went All-American, then Alderburgh.
Alderburgh. It's on the coast, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Alderburgh's on the coast.
Yes, it's near...
And Friston's, effectively, if you look at the back, Friston's a bit in from the sea, so it's obviously where they're going to put whatever they need to, there.
Yes. So, who wants to make the proposal then?
I'll tell you.
Aileen's got dates here.
Okay, members, the next council meeting is the 29th of November. The December meeting is too late. And the planning committee is the 6th of December.
So, we can put it in for the 29th?
29th of November.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you're putting that forward as a proposal?
I'll put that forward as a proposal, Chair.
Thank you. And who would second that? Okay, thank you, Councillor Hudson. Right, could we vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Unanimous? Yes, there's going to be quite a lot of discussion, I think, on that, so I'd like to be more knowledgeable about it.
I, I think if I may, Chair, just to say to Aileen, when she talks to Laura in relation to this item, I think, apart from any financial issues that, that need to be resolved, if people are putting in the stuff at full council, then I think we need to keep this...
Fair agenda?
Fair agenda is the major item.
Yes.
Yeah, it merits it.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so we want to be planning applications now. You need to read this out.
I can read these out for you. Yes, of course, thank you. First application is Little Cliff End Farm Chalk Hill, an amended application, change of use of land from agricultural to the keeping of horses, formation of an access routes for horses and agricultural vehicles, sand school, lunge, that is, vehicle parking area and buns. It's, the amendment is the inclusion of additional bond. Thank you, members. Called in by councillors Green and councillor Young. Quite a lot of information within your papers of why they have called this in, but unfortunately they are not intended, so...
I think councillor Nixie wants to speak to this.
Oh, lovely, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
A couple of things. So, first of all, I mean, the reason councillor Green called for it, he was very conscious of the, you know, green buffer between us and anywhere else and the amount of developments, as we all know, that's going on around Thanet and so on and so forth, that's happening. Now, I mean, I'll put it to councillor Alban to correct me if I'm wrong here, but my understanding, agricultural land, if it gets then to horses, it's one step nearer to being developed, so you have to go down the route of, is that, is that the case? Because that's what I heard.
No, no. No, it's the, if I may, Chair.
Yes, yeah, right.
It's, I mean, there are several places around Thanet. One, I think, is St Nicholas, which, right on the, right on the main Thanet road, as you come, the big roundabout there, they, they applied for horses and, not stables, but it was cover for the horses, et cetera, so they could gra, like, if you put a horse on farmland, doesn't need consent, it can graze, whatever, because it's, it's an animal like any other. And, but once you start to want to do work, like, in this case, buns and a lunge and all this and whatever, then, then that changes the use of that agricultural land. But they did it for about two years to three years, might have been a little bit longer, and it's all back to agricultural land now, so...
I mean, I, I, I don't want to say anything, you know, against it, because I would have practices, but I'll just put it forward for things that I've heard and I think we should be mindful of, is the fact that this is an area of green space, albeit obviously farm and it is good quality, outside Ramsgate. It is, you know, you might put a term that should somebody want to... I do, I have heard from residents that there are roads that have been built on the area, you know, like, substructures, almost as it were, to create more of an area that would begin to development rather than just farming, that's what I've heard, I'm not saying anything else. But I think we're very mindful of the fact that this, if we're conscious, this is what could happen under our nose and it might turn into something that we don't necessarily, everything would be ideal for the, for the area. So, I'm not proposing anything on this, I mean, I'd like to hear what points of view are, but I know that that's councillor Green's, opposes on that part alone.
I, I live in this area and frequent the field and the, was it Dead Dockers Lane that you walk through to get to this. I've seen this development of the stables over a few years and it's increased by about two-thirds, covered entire field. Talking to other residents that frequent that area, there, this gossip and there's a lot of hearsay along the lines of, they're concerned that the change of use of land is leading up to if after, I think it's 10 years, planning application can be made for development.
Which is why I mentioned that, but so...
It is hearsay, but it is a concern of residents and quite a few. And there has been extensive spread of stables all the way up to the old chalk farm lane, which, and that's happened in the last year alone. There's a whole lot of stables now being built, there is now large, like, boulders, like, brief boulders, about that long, that high, being lifted by machinery, where they're storing at the moment manure and hay, and that gets moved around the site. Whether they're actually looking into where that should be permanently, because there's fears about manure being sunk into the aqua, I can't remember.
Well, if you think, sorry, Chair.
Sorry, I mean, did you want, have you finished councillor Hudson? Yeah. Sorry, councillor Alban?
Yeah, I think what you can't handle is, is farm. They can do wherever they like on the farm. Doesn't matter where they live, at any time, they can move it wherever they like. It's like, you live next door, farm you, whatever. I think you need to be, need to get a, a table towel. Not saying it's not right, not saying it's wrong, but I think, under permitted development for farm, that farm, farms have got a lot of permitted development rights, what they can do without any planning consent, and that is putting little walkways through, that is putting roadways through, et cetera, so it's not tarmac, but they can just clear that to clear the grass to make it, and put some stones down or whatever to be able to drive stuff over. However, looking at that, looking at what they're applying for, and I think that, that's the important part, it is as to what they're applying for. Depends, what, what we don't know, obviously, I didn't, I haven't seen the application itself, Chair, but it does say, it says for the keeping of horses. Well, how, how many horses? One? Twenty? Two? I don't know. Formation of access routes for horses and agricultural vehicles.
They've already done that.
But if it sounds like what you're saying, a sand school.
Is he there?
Sand school's quite a large area, just normally a sand school, and a land and vehicle parking area, so they're going to use a vehicle, so it's that concrete going down, is that? Tarmac going, going down? So, I, I think councillor Green's right in being worried in relation to it, not for the visual aspects, you can't...
You can say it's the councillor Green, I'm just...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm not going to try and argue, but, but in terms of like, a buffer between areas and also a green buffer, there's no two ways about it, if we can try and keep whatever we have, then, then there's merits to that and in, within our ability.
Councillor Austin, sorry.
I just wanted to pick up on that from the point of view of the views, that it is something that councillor Green has inserted into our fledgling neighbourhood plan, and I know that's not yet an accepted document, so we can't quote it, but it, the whole business about the views at that side of Ramsgate, it is an important thing to residents. Was there that, has any planning done? I don't know, but I know that's...
As I say...
I was in there.
Thank you. Very, thank you. Councillor Huxley?
I'm going to say in that, the bit that they want to develop now, so the original bit, they didn't get planning permission, they just proved all the earthworks. This is bigger, actually, the earthworks, walls are much, much bigger, you can't see anything from the road, they deliberately sort of knocked it off.
Yeah.
They've got like a roadway through, not tarmac, but they cut it off of this, they put a piece of fine machine in it, so you can't actually drive down it. So, they're obviously sort of, don't want anyone to know what they're doing, which is slightly suspicious.
Well, the planning officer, sorry, Chair. The planning officer will, yeah, I know, I'm sorry, Chair. The, the planning officer, oh, I'm sorry, I think.
Councillor Everett did take it up with TDC planning, they didn't know anything about it.
Councillor, sorry.
Everett, who took it up with TDC planning, because they didn't know anything about it.
Yes. That's interesting.
Yeah, unfortunately, these things happen.
Yeah.
And people do that in any respect of planning, they might build an extension without consent, mightn't they, or even a house? But I think we, we need to ensure that if, if we're going to object to this, if Ramsgate Town Council is going to object to this, it objects it on the proper grounds. And I'm, personally, I think by the sound of it, by the sound of what's happened, and the planning officer will go down for this, I believe, so they will see what's happened and that will come. I think what we need to do is to, is to call this application in at Thanet District Council, so the members of the planning committee there can see and do this. So, I don't know if it has been called in already, but I think we need to do that. I'm happy to call that in and I will do that tomorrow morning if that is what, if that is what...
Did you get the original narrative yet? Yes.
On that then, so we're not excluding horses and horses etc. On that note then, can't we object with the idea that we would like more clarification and details of exactly what's going to happen? Because like you said, how many horses are they doing, blah, blah, blah? So, we aren't fully clear as to what's in plan.
Yeah.
And therefore, we cannot accept this, you know, approve this until we know more details, so that's my proposal.
Sorry, you're proposing that? Yeah.
I'll, I'll second that, Chair.
Seconded by Steve Alban. Thank you. Okay, so what we write to them and ask them for greater clarity?
Yes, you need to vote on that.
Right. Okay, right. Sorry, could we vote on that proposal? It's on a chair. I'm sorry, could we vote on that proposal? Oh, sorry. That seems to be in that.
This proposal we send it to TDCs.
And get greater detail about what's being proposed. Yeah, yes. Bye.
Okay. The next, the next application is one Effingham Street. This is listed building consent and upon the application, for the removal of existing fence, wall and ramp to front, together with excavation works to create off-street parking for two vehicles with the erection of aluminium electric sliding gates, metal steps to first floor masonette and installation of electric charging point. Thank you, members. Sorry, called in by councillor Mackinson and Wing. It's in the conservation area and they're concerned about the impact on the street scene, negative impact on the listed building and/or the coverage of a listed building. Thank you.
So, I'll wait.
So, that fence, you've got there, they're going to remove that and replace the gates and then the stairways, they're going to be similar design.
Stairways what?
Stairways, they're going to be similar design at the back.
Right.
So, you've got existing fence, then they're going to take that down, put gates and electric charging point. That stairwell is covered.
Right.
The bottom of Effingham Street, alone, opposite, opposite the...
Yeah. It's the big one, isn't it, on the, the end, big house, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Councillor Huxley?
Do I have an application on this?
Yes.
You must have heard, you could say, building inside.
I don't know what you mean.
They have been down or withdrawn, perhaps withdrawn on this as a replacement, is my understanding.
Because we, I would object to it because it was light and some wonderful things, wasn't it, it was going into the other property and...
Yes.
What are people's thoughts?
Yeah, if I may.
Councillor Alban?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've got no problem with the fence being removed, I mean, it just looks horrible anyway. That looks horrible and so...
If the, if the...
Yeah, if the, again, I can, the only thing here is excavation work to create off-street parking. I'm not clear how far that is, if it doesn't say how far down it is to revel, they, they got to do for two vehicles. And the aluminium electric sliding gates, again, I don't think there's a problem, providing they're black, they're, they're coated properly, can be seen through, instead of it being a blank, because that wouldn't look good for the listed building in itself. And the steps as well, I really can't see anything wrong with the steps, going up, the ladder going up around, I think that looks quite attractive, doesn't detract from the listed structure. So, overall, my only concern is, is, is in relation to what they're digging out, to get the cars there.
Councillor Austin? Sorry, Councillor Hudson, you first.
I agree. I think the aluminium gates, it sounds awful, but black, got to be black, I think. And staircase, I think it looks lovely, but excavation wise, we need to look at that. What does the...
Sorry, Councillor...
Just starts the excavation, behind that fence, there's all of the soil and then there's like a mini garden bit, which is taller than the car, so they'll be removing that to put...
Right, so they're removing it down just to, just to where this, to where that, the car, the same level as where the car's shown?
Yeah. Yes, so you've got the soil there and the fence.
Okay.
The cradle of it, that's good to grab.
I think that, yeah. Quite happy with that. To be honest, I'm quite happy with the application then.
Have you voted, councillor Austin? Have you specified that the gates must be, yes?
Yeah.
Quality black coated, streetscape, et cetera. I know.
I've proposed that, that we make no objection to this application, Chair, providing that the aluminium gates are coated black, so it doesn't detract from the character of the grade two listed, listed building.
Lovely, thank you. Does someone want to second that? Councillor Nixie, thank you. Can we vote on that, please? Should we unanimous? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aileen.
That's okay. Your next application is Vale Square Gardens. Vale Square, a lot of trees here. Three application, repolade, reduce height, crown lift, et cetera. Called in by councillor Austin for a closer trees.
Yep. Yes, we've had some objections from residents about this, as, as happened the last time there was a tree worse elsewhere. And so, I want to have a first look and see what I would think. I know there are some of these where they're sycamore, several trunks or whatever, and they want to be in that, that makes some kind of sense to me, but I want to try to get an idea of the overall impact of this, because the last plant works for it, it was quite, it should be the worst of your match.
Severe.
It's very severe and I know some residents are concerned that it will be the same again.
Thank you. Councillor Nixie, you wanted to speak?
Councillor, I'd like to know who brought this in, who, who's applying?
That's just a question I was going to ask.
Residents Association.
Because, I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I, you know, I know we want to protect trees, but, but the trees, like any plant, need looking after, grooming and so on and so forth. And, and actually, it is better in the sense that the more you do it properly and you do it well, then it grows back better. If you do it a little bit and not much, it actually makes the problem worse. So, unfortunately, there's an element of you just sort of like, have to be brutal, you know what I mean? You know, cause be kind type of stuff. So, if this is by the Residents' Association and they've gone through and they've marked out what needs to be done, then I would trust their judgment, because I don't think they necessarily want to take their own trees away, do they? But trees need to be looked after, they are a plant that needs, you know, help.
I'd agree with councillor Nixie, Chair, I think the, the only trees to be removed fell four of the five sycamore trees, which are probably self, self seeded, and it's to reduce, in, in regard to all the others, it's to reduce the height of trees, crown raised from bottom up. So, to me, that sounds sense and I'll go along, if the Residents' Association have done it and want it done, then that's fine. I haven't got an issue with it.
You want to speak, I'm sure, you want to say something, I don't know.
It's a little bit clearer from the photographs that they've splashed for you and they've actually done quite a good job to them. and it, they've actually done quite a good job to show you what they want to do.
Yeah, if you actually, uh, look at the trees, actually, come to town in the Vale Square, look up at the trees, you see there's been a lot of tree work done there in the past. Yeah, and uh, basically what has happened is that they've cut it back in the past and this is the growth that's grown back.
Yes, I can see how it's going, it's going back to the previous.
It's got a bit of ash tree, it can appear of it. I mean, it's coming over the range.
It's just one of those unfortunate things you just have to do.
Yeah. Fit like the palms, really.
Nothing good to say.
Shop them out, let's forget.
Has anybody else got anything to say on this topic?
Well, just, uh, I actually went down that, that square and had a really good look. And what I found is quite interesting, there's no sign of any diseased trees.
Not even any ash?
No, no, no ash dieback.
Hmm.
If you go, if you go up Montferry Woodlands, there's ash dieback, there are puddles. And if you go into uh, King George VI's Morial Park, they've got that sooty bark. And it's all infected, but it's quite healthy now.
Thank you, councillor, I'm sure the residents of Vale Square are delighted to know that, yes.
Think as well that it's um, it's because of work has previously been done. That's why the trees, it's healthy. I, I would, I would as- assume, I don't know. I propose with chair, I propose that we make no objection.
No, you haven't got anything else to, can anybody else know? Okay, so.
I propose no objection, chair.
That's no objection, who would second that motion? And councillor Nixie? Lovely.
Thank you.
We vote each year?
We vote please.
Yes.
Is that unanimous? Yes, it is indeed.
Unanimous, it's.
Next application is sixty Royal Road, it's in the conservation area. Erection of two-story flat roof rear extension with addition of white U P V C windows on rear elevation, together with the installation of three roof lights to existing rear roof slope following demolition of existing single-story rear extension. Called in by councillor Wing, um, reason for calling in a conserva- conservation area listed building. Thank you.
Right, can I just ask a question, chair? It's, is it a listed building? There's no listed building.
Doesn't say it's not a listed building application.
Oh, okay.
We've got any, um, oh, yes, here we have, thank you, David.
So it's this white area here.
Yeah.
They're going all the way up to the roof level, so it's actually higher than the extent. So that's it, we need to get back and this is what they're opposed to do, extend down and angle on the wall.
Right.
So that's existing, so if you look, it's actually big.
Yeah.
And then they want to put that in the back.
Quite a large.
Pairing that to next door.
Yeah.
Next door's extensions that.
Right. So they're, it's a story higher than any of the others, is that what you're saying?
Uh, it's a bit taller, yeah, I wouldn't say it's too.
Yeah.
Looking at that, that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, okay.
Could you take us back to the street scene? Thank you, just trying to look what the, what the results were.
One next door's the closest one for an extension.
Yeah.
Like.
One next door's got an extension on the other side of that, lower.
Yeah, it's hush, yeah.
It's a president there, isn't it? And it wouldn't be overlooking anything that was.
I don't think it overlooks anything, does it?
Have we got, um, have we got an actual street scene? Get to the, can we get to the street? Can we do a, access the street scene? It's all the, no, from the front, I just couldn't see.
Which house it is at the front.
Chair.
Yes, what else we can see. Hmm, that's.
Councillor Alvin running. Thank you, Dave. That's brilliant, thanks. Yeah, double fronted. Yeah.
Doesn't make it right though, does it? But it, but it's on the rear elevation, so.
Rare, you can't see it from the front, yes.
But.
What are people's thoughts on this, councillor?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we should have no objection subject to um, the rear windows not being U V P C and should be of, uh, should, should be wooden, um, slash sliding hinges.
That what you're proposing?
That's what I'm proposing, chair.
And is anybody seconding that?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Could we vote on that, just what's a general thoughts, yes? Okay, is it okay to put that in?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members. Um, your last one is land adjacent to thirty-four and thirty-six Lawn Road. Direction of two-story, two-bedroom, end-of-terrace dwelling. Councillor Nixie calls, called this in, um, concern of location.
So Lawn Road used to be a nice quiet road and sort of like um, uh, turn of the century, cheap by jowl, you know, terrace housing. And over the last year or so, the owner of the Iron Thomas site has developed a considerable amount of housing that is in private rental area. Um, and letting them out at quite a decent rate, I'd say, that's his, this isn't his choice, of course. However, in my last eight months of being a councillor, it's been eighty percent of the workload that I've had to do is to do with this road. It's, it's, um, yeah, it's become quite a problem, quite a problem. Um, with basically the, uh, rented properties, the new properties. There's a very high turnover of people and sometimes there isn't a high turnover in particular because four orders haven't been established with certain houses and certain people aren't going. Um, at least been involved, there's a lot going on, that's all I'll say to this. Um, and this is the final patch that hasn't quite been filled in. I think planning wise, people might look at it and see no objection whatsoever, I could understand it would be going through. So I bring it with the concerns of ward councillor, that, that, that the area has changed in that road. Um, antisocial behaviour especially, there's nowhere to go, it's, it's really quite a bit of a, a ghetto at the minute. Yeah, and so I'm disappointed to see this. Um, and I like your advice and thoughts on, on this, because in terms of planning, I wouldn't know what to do. I just want you to know what is happening in the area at the time. Thank you, councillor Nixie. Has anybody else got anything? Councillor Huxley. No, so basically what you do is you go up, you come off Graves Road, you come up May's Road and Lawn Road crosses, there's, there's um, I can say basically, but it's, there's another road, Bloom, Bloom to Bree.
Yeah, Bloom to Bree.
Turn right, it used to be a relatively short run of like a, say, turn of the century terrace, terrace housing. And then there was a very large industrial site, the Iron Thomas amusement site, that used to have warehouses and so on and so forth. That's site over a period of time, and I know there's another application to come in after this one on Graves Road area, but that site over a period of ti- time has been turned into this particular housing. Now there are either two or three bedroomed houses, um, with, uh, there's nothing, there's nowhere to go. Once you, once you're in it, you're in it. And unfortunately, at the end, this is again part of the problem that we're having, at the end, there's gaps, there's the last gaps that hadn't been filled in, um, which is classed as a turning circle. But it's an area where the youth of Thanhet are congregating and, um, and like I say, there's a lot going on there, I won't say anymore publicly, but it, it, it's not ideal because it is at its end, it's not being monitored, it's not being policed, kids go up there, parents think they're safe. It's just a bit of an antisocial nightmare at the moment. But unfortunately, to get to it, you're passing all the other residents who have had their lives in turmoil for the last eight months. So this is, like I say, I can only, it's disappointing, because I, I, I'm sure, you know, you could say more, why wouldn't you put it in there? I can't see the planning objection, I know that will make my life difficult and the residents living there. Thank you, councillor Nixie. So councillor Orban, you want to just?
Yeah, I, I think we've, we can only deal with what's before us, chair. So, which is a development, whatever happens around it, it's not a concern, it's not a planning concern. Um, so we have to, what we're talking about is a brownfield site and it's what we want property developed on. So, um, and if it's filling that gap, the only thing, um, the other thing that I like about it is the, where the roof drops down, you have a little roof there and um, it just doesn't sit right in the, in the street scene for me. But for a house to be built there and on a, on a brownfield piece of, piece of land, which fits in between the other houses that's actually there, similar design to the other houses, it will get a brutal chair and.
And I think, I mean, that's why I was in, because I, I, I can understand that and it, and I, and I wouldn't, I can't give an objection, I'm not trying to give an objection, don't get me wrong, but I mean, like, planning wise, I agree with you councillor Orban, absolutely. But I think that it's one of the problems that we as a council are having, is it's like infill. And, you know, that's extra people, extra parking, et cetera, et cetera, that is actually creating lots of the problems, the workload that we are having is, is through this, you know, and because the end is not green, the, any green in that part of the, of the, of the ground is completely gone. And it's hard standing, it's noisy, it's a difficult, it's a difficult place to live at the moment, that road.
Chair, if I may.
Councillor Nixie. Sorry, yes, councillor Alvin?
I mean, but what you've got to remember is that there was a commercial development there. So, you know, that's all hard standing, that's all, that's everything like that.
You can't, that's not fair. It was a commercial development, it was five o'clock in the evening and there, and so it was quiet and there was wildlife, because there were trees, and so it's not the same as it was. I mean, yes, it was, it was, but it, it was hard standing, but there were also, there were three sycamores that were cut down, there was hedges that was cut down and so forth, there was a lot of wildlife in there, there was all sorts of things. And it wasn't, in the weekends, nobody was there and in the evenings, nobody was there. It's a very, very different kettle of fish now, councillor Orban, I promise you.
Finished that, chair, it was to say that at the end of the day, we've got a brownfield site. Do we, do we build on brownfield sites or do we build on fields? And this, I know that we haven't got a choice with, with either of that at the moment. The government's force says you need to fill the brownfield sites. So this is a house on the brownfield site, joining up with, with others, and I can't see a problem with it, chair.
Appreciate what you're saying, but I think the concerns are very valid. And that's it, and councillor Orban, that's exactly what I'm saying, I don't disagree with you there.
They are valid, chair, but it's, it's not a planning reason.
No, 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 but councillor Nixie's not, I'm not saying it is, councillor Orban, you're seeing the point, I'm not saying it is. What I am saying is that we as a council have to be mindful, that if these decisions are made, and yes, fine, okay, there's no objection, I get, I get that. But if these decisions are made, and as I said, the quality of life of the residents there changed dramatically through the fact that it is not just like an empty site after five o'clock and it's hard, it's hard standing. Because like I said, there's a lot of wildlife and there's little noise. This is that land, so yes, of course, I can't find an objection, I can't also find an objection to that, to the house per se. What I'm mainly concerned with is the result of infilling houses in the area that I have had a lot of problems with, councillor Green and I have had a lot of problems with in the last eight months. So I have to be mindful of that.
I, I, I'm not, I don't dispute that one iota, but. At the end of the day, there's other ways of dealing with those, with those issues and other considerations.
I, I think I am and I think we are. My, I thought this, so I could ask for advice. I didn't bring it to council to object to it, I called it in so that we could talk about it. Councillor Austin, councillor Huxley.
Are there suggestions we can make about the hard standing, for example, about permeability of surface and that? I know it's not going to help at all with the, the issues that you're raising, councillor Nixie, but I'm just wondering if there are small mitigations that we could suggest? Some tree planting, some use of, of permeable flooring, whatever, around the.
Around the proposed building? Why not? Residents have asked for trees and hedges.
In the house? Which stuff are you asking?
Councillor Huxley.
Roof to match others.
Aesthetically speaking, yes.
And is there any planning issues in terms of density of housing? Can you turn it down? Because it's.
No, because the size is, but, excuse me, chair, if I, if I may, the, the, um, yeah, when you see it stepping down, it stepped down too far, it needs to go to the height of the adjacent buildings. Needs to match that. Um, you know, you stepped it down, oh, we do that. But I would think during the discussion with the planning officers, they, they won't like that either and they will want that back up there.
So can we make a note of that too? Are there any other comments to be made about this? Okay, now do you understand from your point of view, councillor, if you don't want to creating a sort of ghetto area? Yeah. Like councillor Campbell used to say, this lumps of tomorrow. Service. Okay, anybody else got anything to say? Okay, so what are we doing, we're passing this, we're proposing, anybody propose that it's?
Let someone else propose something.
Okay, does anybody want to propose, councillor Austin?
I'm going to propose that we have no objection in principle to the building and we support the fact that it's on a brownfield site, but that we would like to see some mitigation in the form of some tree and hedge planting and some, and that the, we would ask planning officers to insist on permeable.
Floor.
The roof line.
And the roof line, yes, to match, yes, the roof line to match the rest, yes.
I would second that, chair.
Thank you.
If I may.
Thank you.
Good pose.
Right, exactly, thank you. Oh, a date and time of next meeting is Wednesday, the sixth of December, seven. Thank you very much, residents, thanks everyone.
Thank you.